We started if we all sang Happy Birthday to Commissioner Aikmas. So if y'all will join us in singing Happy Birthday, please stand up. You gotta stand up to sing Happy Birthday now. All right, here we go.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday Commissioner Aikmas. Happy Birthday to you.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Frank, I'd like to remind you, you have Jerry to thank for that.
I'm sure.
It's become a tradition, seems like. Well, good afternoon. We'll call this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order. And as is our custom, begin our meeting with the invocation led by Commissioner Aikmas.
Bow with me if you will. Gracious God, we thank you for this time that we can come together. We pray that you'll lead, guide, and direct our proceedings here tonight. We pray that all that we do will be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to take the opportunity to recognize those employees who have spent some time with us here and reached a point of tenure with the county. So we'll do that at this time. With Public Works, we have Hayden Hunter with five years service. With the Sheriff's Office, Benjamin Eklund with five years. Bruce Titus with Social Services, also five years. Our 15-year recipients with the Library, Karen Hare, Sheriff's Office, Robert Vaughn, and Social Services, Rhonda McClanahan. With 20 years service, Community Support and Outreach, Gloria Haney. Social Services, Patricia Van. And with Public Works with 25 years service, Kevin Quick. We had two retirements in November. Melissa Meader with Human Services, Business Ops, with 20 years service. And Betty King in Building Code Enforcement with 24 years. So we thank those employees for their commitment to the citizens of Union County. Item number four is 2020 Digital County Survey Top Ten Award. The Center for Digital Government and the National Association of Counties announced the Union County Information Technology Department has been granted the honor of being a winner in the 17th Anniversary Digital County Survey in our population demographic. This survey identifies the best technology practices among U.S. counties, including initiatives that streamline the delivery of government services, encourage collaboration in shared services, enhance cybersecurity, and contribute to disaster response and recovery efforts. Do we have a plaque to present? Right. Mr. Carl Lucas.
If we can do it, yeah, right in front of the seal, that'd be awesome.
Carl, we're gonna begin with the road refills in here. Congratulations on the job we've done so far.
Thank you.
We have two individuals signed up to speak. Based on those two individuals, I probably should read this information on how you don't say anything ugly or anything like that, but I'll pass. I'll pass. Our first speaker is Brian Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to address Commissioner Aikmas and just say thank you for your leadership in the past eight years, your friendship, and more importantly, for your dedication to the county. A great sacrifice that all of you know that it comes, and certainly not for the paycheck that you receive. But, you know, Stephen Covey says leaders, it's not what you say, but what you do. And that's exactly what you've done for this county, thinking long-term. Disagreeing with me is just fine, and others, but you've held true to your principles and not wavered from that, always willing to listen to individuals, and a pretty smart fellow. Don't tell Ashley, your wife, that too much. But I know many of you would agree, we're gonna miss you in this county, but you're not done. You've got a lot more to offer Union County, but I just wanted to personally say, I speak for many of your friends who weren't able to be here today, and say thank you for everything that you've done, and look forward to the future with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners, Mr. Manager, and of course, my friend Lynn. Good to see y'all again. It's been a long time since I've sat up there where you all are sitting today. I served from 2010 to 2014, and I know the sacrifices that it takes. And for you to be, for Frank, for you to be willing to do it for not just one time, but for two terms, eight years, I could only imagine the amount of stress and struggles that it has brought upon you. But you stood firm on what you believed in, and I really appreciate it. So I just wanted to come over here and tell you thanks. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for all the time and effort you put into this county, and more importantly, and most importantly, for your friendship. So look forward to having a good time together. Thank you.
concludes our informal comments. Next item is additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda. Motion to approve. Motion to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye. None opposed. Motion for consent. Motion to approve consent. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Takes us to old business. Item 21, 2021 reappraisal. Proposed Schedule Values, Rules and Standards for Adoption.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. There we go. The agenda item for this afternoon is related to the 2021 reappraisal and the proposed schedule of values to be used in that process. If you recall, at the Board's October 19th meeting, we delivered the proposed schedule of values, rules and standards, and subsequently held a public hearing on November 2nd. The final step in the process is a formal adoption of the proposed schedule, which is being requested today. To reiterate some points from our previous meetings, the proposed schedule of values has been developed based on activity in the local real estate market that has occurred since 2015. This is not a projection of where we think the market's gonna go. It is simply a retrospective look at what has occurred in the market since that time. The proposed schedule has been available for inspection by the public, both online and in the Tax Administrator's Office. As of today, there have been no comments, questions, or concerns directly to our office regarding this schedule. What we have done from an outreach standpoint, we've worked with the communications team to launch a dedicated webpage for the 2021 reappraisal, or revaluation, and to distribute relevant information regarding the process. The revaluation was one of the items highlighted in this week, in last week's UC update, and it was a top link visited from that communication that went out from the Communications Department. And Catherine told me this was roughly 700 unique visits to that webpage last week. So we are getting the information out there. There is helpful information on the website that will assist in answering taxpayer questions and provide details on how property owners can appeal if they deem it necessary for their property values. There are currently, there are four public information meetings that have been scheduled, starting next week, going through the end of January. Three of those meetings are virtual, and the links have been provided, and that schedule's been provided on the county website as well, so people can join, answer, ask any questions they need to during that one-hour time slot, and we'll have staff available to answer those Additionally, as of this morning, we have scheduled meetings, six public meetings, with municipalities in the county. We'll be presenting to their boards as well. The first one starts on December 8th. We'll be scheduling those until we meet with each town through the end of February, early part of March. Additional tools and resources have been added almost daily to the site. We'll continue to do that. One of the items you've approved on the consent agenda today is a tool that will allow property owners to compare their values to their neighboring property values and help determine equity and assessments in their neighborhood, which we can then review and determine if there's an issue there. With that, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Hearing none? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to issue an order adopting the final uniform schedules of values, rules, and standards for the 2021 general reappraisal of real property at its true value and its present use value. And also to direct the clerk to publish the notice of this order required by the North Carolina General Statute 105-317 and a newspaper of general circulation in Union County for four consecutive weeks, starting November 21st, 2020.
Motion discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board conducted the public hearing for this rezoning request at the last meeting. Just as a refresher, this is an 80-lot, single-family residential development on Newtown Road, just east of the intersection with Potter. And as you can see, it has one access point onto Newtown. These were the suggested conditions, and you should have, in your agenda packets, a signed condition list from the developer, and they do match these suggested conditions. Again, just to recap on utilities, the area is served by a mix of well and septic and water and sewer. This project is proposed to be served by Union County Public Water and Sewer. Water is close to the project at the intersection of Newtown and Potter, and water will need to be extended to serve the property. Sewer is available, again, with a short extension that will connect to an existing line in the Winding Creek neighborhood, and all of those improvements will be at the developer's expense. And the planning board voted four to two to recommend approval of the request. Planning board noted it was a quality project, it was consistent with a comprehensive plan. The descending members noted that they had some concerns regarding the density of the project, traffic, and flooding, and stormwater concerns. At the public hearing, you heard from the developer, and you also heard from two nearby property owners that were opposed to the project. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Helms.
The total acreage is 30...
Thirty-three and some change.
Yeah, did I see that actually of the vacant land, there'll be about 14 acres?
That's about right.
Okay. So 80 houses on 15 to 16 acres.
Right, so you've got, everything else will be set aside as common area on the
Mr. Ray.
I did notice on the last thing, this property does border R-20, which does allow two houses per acre. And I know I've seen other projects that this builder has built, so I would like to make a motion to adopt the consistency statement approving the rezoning petition CZ 2020-006 to rezon the property appearing on tax maps as parcel 06-090-18 and 06-90-18A in the Sandy Ridge Township from RA-40 to R-6CZ as consistent with the current plan and approve rezoning petition CZ 2020-006 to rezon the property from RA-40 to R-6CZ and approve the conditions as accepted by the applicant.
We have a motion? Discussion? Mr. Helms?
Yeah, I'm a little confused. You brought up R-20. You're saying you want to approve this at 2, what, 244?
Yes. I'm saying it's right beside R-20. And, you know, clustering to save on expenses has been something that has, you know, when you were asking about how much open acreage, I know he's putting 80 on 20 acres, but the rest of it's dedicated to common areas.
Well, I've gotta be honest in that, I think the infrastructure in that particular area, which I'm very familiar with, is not sufficient to sustain another 80 homes, especially right after another development that's being built close by. So, I mean, I would have to, I cannot support the motion. And I, like you, know that the builder builds one of the finest homes around, and it bothers me to say no, but I've gotta think about the community, and it's, that's a very stressed area. I live about a quarter of a mile from there, and it's difficult to get out.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Opposed. All right. Thank you. Takes us to item 23, Yadkin Regional Water Supply Project Update and Action Items. Mr. Chairman, we've got our Public Works staff coming in for this presentation now.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I think we're on agenda item 23, and so we're here to give you an update on the status of the Yadkin project, and it's got three components to it, and we're asking you to take two actions. So John Chutak, who's the Program Manager for the CIP, is going to provide for you a current status update on the CIP program. And then, we're also going to talk to you about the lake use easement with Duke Energy. And lastly, Beverly Lyles is gonna talk to you about the bond resolution that we need. These are two actions that we need in order to progress the Yadkin project forward from where we are right now to eventual completion. And so first, John's gonna start off by giving you some information as to where we are and take you through the lake use easement.
Good afternoon. So it's been a few months since we talked about this project. We were last here in July, so wanted to give you an update on things. And like Hung said, I'm just gonna be running through an overall update on the project, and run through some good news, because everyone likes good news, give you an overview of the program, where we stand with construction, go over some information on easement acquisition, and then talk about the agreement with Duke Energy. At that point, I'll hand it over to Beverly Lyles, and she'll talk about actions that we need to take related to project financing and the bond resolution. So good news. Back in July, you all approved the Phase Two contracts and GMP amounts with the design-build teams, and as part of that, we were able to hit all of the notice-to proceed dates that the teams needed. So this directly related to item number two. We had approved some escalation amounts, and Commissioner Ray, but I think you'll remember, you asked me about those, but we were able to meet those contract dates and pull the $2.7 million back out, so those escalation costs will not apply. Our design is advancing to 100%, and we're roughly three weeks ahead of schedule on that, so good news there. Easement acquisition is on schedule and running under budget, and our permitting efforts to date remain on track to keep the project moving forward on schedule. Just as a reminder on the overall scope of the project, as you can see here, we've got the blue dot here in the upper right, that's Lake Tillery and the intake facility. The dash pinkish line is the raw water transmission main. The purple dot up on the map is where the water treatment plant is gonna be located. And then the line, purple line running east-west across the county there, is the finished water transmission main. I put on here just as a refresher of where that transmission main has interconnects with our existing system, and there's two of them along Roanoke Church at Ridge Road and 601, as well as at Bockham Road and Sykes Mill, and then two on New Salem, both at Morgan Mill and Old Camden Road. It's important to note that the interconnected Old Camden Road will actually allow us to feed water into the 762 zone towards the Wingate area until the future East Side Transmission Main is constructed, which is shown as the dash pinkish line going to the south there. So the program's broken up into two projects, the raw water infrastructure and the finished water infrastructure project. Raw Water Project is the intake pump station and raw water transmission main. The adopted GMP amount is $149.7 million, planning on being substantially complete in May, with final completion of the project in November. In case you're wondering why there's a six-month gap between those two dates, there's some demolition work associated with the town in Orwood's existing facility, which has to be done in the lake, and we can't do that until that fall work window opens up in September. So there's an extended timeframe to actually close the project out. On the finished water side, that includes the water treatment plant, finished water transmission main, and had a GMP of $110.9 million, substantially complete in July of 2023, with final completion 90 days later in October of 2023. So the other thing you may be asking yourself is, why don't the substantial completion dates line up? Well, on the raw water side, substantial completion is defined as the ability of the team to deliver raw water to the treatment plant. Well, we can't hit substantial completion on the treatment plant until we've run it through its paces to produce finished water, so there's about a two-month gap in there to allow the plant to come online, run through its paces, go through the approvals, and actually produce treated water. As a refresher on the overall program budget, back in November of 2019, we had presented information broken down into the various categories you see here, the raw water project, the finished water project, our program management costs, fiber optic communications, land acquisition costs, and permitting, legal, and interlocal agreement costs. That totaled up to $296.2 million. When we came back to you in July, this had gone up slightly to $303 million, in part due to those escalation costs. And today, we're right at $300.7 million. And as we talked about before, this is pulling those escalation costs out, and we've seen just a slight change in the projected completion cost on land acquisition. In July of 2020, we were looking at, or estimating it to be a $4.5 million expense. We're now looking at it as being $4.9 million to close that out, still running under the budget of $5.3 million. So we're trending in the right direction as we move forward, just under a 1% drop in the overall cost of the project since we talked to you four months ago. Moving on into construction, we had the groundbreaking ceremonies, so everybody's wondering when we're gonna start. On the raw water side, the intake is planned to start in this month, November 2020. Initial items of work will be mobilizing to the site, getting the job trailer set up, establishing erosion control on the site, making temporary utility connections, and then demolishing the existing structure that's there, all in preparation to really start the work in earnest. On the pipeline, we're planning to start in January of 2021, and the initial items of work there will be the pre-construction inspection, clearing of the easement area, blasting if we need to do so for rock removal, and getting the trenchless installations put in at various road and rail crossings, roughly for the first 10 miles of the raw water pipeline. On the finished water side, plan on starting out the water treatment plant site in January of 21. Very similar to the intake site, the initial items of work will be mobilizing to the site, getting the job trailer set up, temporary utility connections, getting erosion control set up on the site, and getting it cleared, again, in preparation for construction work to start in earnest. And similarly on the pipeline, planning on starting that in December of this year. We're actually doing the pre-construction inspection this week, so we should have a couple of nice days tomorrow and Wednesday to get that done. And similar to the raw water transmission main, the initial items of work are gonna be clearing the easement limits, getting that blasting work done for rock removal if needed, and then getting trenchless installations started at the various roadway crossings along the alignment. So easement acquisition, brought this up as a point of good news. We remain on schedule, under budget, and one other important item here that I wanted to bring to your attention is condemnation filings have been limited to 6% of the total property interests. So that's 20 in total, seven in Stanley County and 13 in Union County. If you look at it on a project basis, it would be 14 on the raw water side and six on the finished water side. So while condemnation is a tool in the toolbox, it is seldom used, and it is used as, just as a last resort. We attempt to negotiate with property owners to get to a settlement. Just some rough numbers here for you. 317 total easements. We've acquired 270. There's 47 remaining, and this is just broken down so you can see it by project or by location. And then on the budget side, so it says fee simple costs. We did have a couple of easements that turned into fee simple acquisitions due to impacts such as septic, where we simply couldn't relocate the septic within the existing parcel, so those became fee simple acquisitions. Spent about $200,000 on that. Remaining easement costs are running about $2.7 million, with the estimated remaining cost at about $700,000. So our total all-in cost for property acquisition is about $3.6 million against a budget of $4 million, so we're still running under budget by about $400,000. Just to put this in graphical presentation for you, what you can see here is green is acquired, red is outstanding. This is the raw water pipeline, so as you can see, just to the left of Aquadale, where that hump is between Anson and Union and Stanley County, that's roughly the first 10 miles of the pipeline. That's Long Creek there. So this is the first segment of work that the contractor's looking at doing work on. So what you can see here is that we have very few remaining interests to obtain, so we're focusing our efforts to make sure that those sequenced areas of work are acquired. Again, there's 235 total easements here. We're about 83% complete and very much on track for that first 10 miles of pipeline. Similarly, on the finished water side, again, green is acquired, red is outstanding. We've got four clustered that are remaining clustered around the Monroe Bypass. We've got one outstanding near Roanoke Church and Ridge Road, and then basically smack in the middle of the page there is the Crossing of Lake Twitty, and that's City of Monroe. And that document is finalized, it's in the mayor's office for signature, so we're really down to just the last couple of easements here. 93% complete, so we're getting 76 out of 82, making good progress. Now, the last item I wanted to talk to you about was the easement agreement with Duke Energy. This is required so that the project can make use of Lake Tillery, both doing construction work in it, as well as withdrawing water from the lake. So the FERC approval of the lake use permit allowed Duke to issue that easement agreement to us. This is the, kind of the last step in the process, so we've been at this for several years, you know, starting with working with... years, you know, starting with working with Duke Energy on the lake use permit and getting all of that documentation put together, Duke making that submittal to FERC, the nine-month review period with FERC, and the approval through them, and then it's coming back down through Duke to both Union County and the town of Norwood. So this is the last step in the process. And the other thing to note here is that it does require annual fees to Duke Energy, and these are best explained, there's some words there, but I'll try and explain it a little more succinctly. There's an energy replacement charge, so every drop of water that we pull out of Lake Tillery is not available to Duke Energy to generate electricity, so there's a cost to that. The other component of it is a capacity replacement charge. Now, this capacity replacement charge, if you think of a hydroelectric facility, it's based on lake level. So whatever the lake level is, determines how much electricity that facility can produce. So if a project were to substantially alter that lake level, then it would impact the capacity of the hydroelectric facility at Lake Tillery. As you know, we looked at this project at the onset, and as part of the IBT permitting process, we determined the lake level impact here is pretty minimal. It's on the matter of inches, so it doesn't really impact what you would consider firm capacity of that facility. When we looked at all of this, based on rates and information from Duke Energy, these costs are on the order of tens of thousands of dollars a year for an operating budget. In 2024, we're looking at an approximate cost of $20,000 for the first year the facility's online. By the time you go out to 2055, at the end of the projections that were included in the lake use permit, this number jumps up to about $68,000. So these are not significant operating costs by any means. Just going through the timeline here, as you know, in July, we received the approval from FERC. That freed up Duke Energy to issue that easement agreement, which they did in August. Through September, after receiving that document, staff and both staff and outside council reviewed it and returned comments to Duke Energy. In October, Duke had completed their review of our commentary, held a conference call with Union County, Town in Norwood, and Duke Energy folks all on the call, just to go through everything, make sure everybody was comfortable with where things stood. And one of the things coming out of that was some contact information that was supplied to staff to validate those fees that were associated with the permit or the easement agreement. This was obviously a big concern for staff and management. We really wanted to get some clarity on this, so we did do our homework, reached out to Greenville Water, who operates under a very similar agreement, only they're pulling water out of Lake Kiwi. They were able to confirm for us that that capacity replacement charge has never been assessed in the 20-plus years that they've been operating with Duke Energy. They were also able to confirm that the unit cost per kilowatt is very consistent with Duke. So their annual costs really don't change a lot. What it's really directly tied to is how much water they're pulling out of the lake. That's it. So no big surprises in the annual billing, which was comforting for staff and management to hear. So that brings us to today. Now that we've done our homework and done all the reviews, we're asking for you all to allow the county manager to execute that agreement. So right now, I'm at the point where I'm going to hand it off to our finance director. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have before I do so. Thanks, sir. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, commissioners. In front of you have our financing timeline for a revenue bond, which the majority of this is for Yadkin, but also includes some other projects that we'll talk about in a minute. So as you are aware, there's been a lot of work leading up till today already for the financing. We've been working with our feasibility consultant, also our bond counsel, and our financial advisor. We've already been in discussions with the local government commission to get their approval for us to move forward with the action that we're asking you to take today. So today's action is that you would adopt the initial resolution, which allows us to actually file the application with the LGC for the financing. It also allows us to enter into agreement with our underwriting team to put our financing team in place for the revenue bond. Following today, we will be meeting with the LGC the week of December the 14th to review the feasibility study. January the 11th, that week, we will send our packages to credit rating agencies. January 15th, we're scheduled to submit the notice to the local legislative committee. The week of January 25th, our finance staff and management team and public works team will be actually meeting in conference call virtually this year with our rating agencies to receive an update on our rating. February 5th, we would submit the LGC application. We would come back to you on February the 8th, ask you to adopt the final bond order and resolution. At the March 2nd LGC meeting, we would ask them to approve the financing. We would go to market, actually price the bonds, March the 11th. We would sign the bond purchase agreement at that time as well, and on March 25th, we would actually close on the bond. So the majority of this issuance will be for Yadkin, however, it does include other projects such as the Poplin Road sewer project for the interim improvements, the 853 West Transmission Main, the second phase of the shortline water extension program, and two administration buildings at our wastewater treatment plants. So in your package, you have estimated debt service impact cost with a total true and interest cost of 2.74%. We have built into this interest rate a market cushion of 50 basis points. Due to the volatility of the market right now, we're uncertain of where that interest rate will actually end up in March, but in order to be safe, we've built that cushion in, so hopefully we're showing you the worst-case scenario. Our debt service payments would begin in 2023, which coincides with when the project would actually come online and would conclude in 2051. So I'm open to any questions you may have.
Mr. Ray?
I appreciate this fine financial report. I just have one question. Are you going to let Ashley Lance beat you on deer killing this year?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
If my God services come through for my brother.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
So this takes you then to your requested actions for your agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. First, want to commend staff on a job well done. This has been a project that, as you've heard, has taken many, many years, but in doing so, it has prepared this county for more than likely the next century. I only wish that Commissioner Rushing was here to have witnessed this presentation, because I think we all know that Commissioner Rushing has been confused about the magnitude of this project and what it would cost and what the end result would be. So I would ask that staff ensure that he gets a copy of this presentation. With that, I will make a motion that we authorize the county manager to execute the water intake facilities, easement, and withdrawal agreement between Duke Energy Progress LLC, Union County, and the town of Norwood upon legal review, and adopt the resolution of the Union County Board of Commissioners of the County of Union, North Carolina, directing the application to the local government commission for approval of enterprise systems, revenue bonds, and certain related matters.
Motion discussed. If you're not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Takes us now to our new business, item 24, the Union County 2050 update. Mr. Morgan?
We've got the video we're going to show up to.
Do I?
We've got the video we're going to show up to.
Oh, you're going to do that first?
Yeah. Archie is going to give an update to the board about where the coordinating committee is with the UC 2050 plan. But before Archie gets into that, we wanted to share with you a video. As you know, the draft plan is going to go out for public comment starting at the end of this month, and Archie was kind enough to work with us, as was Catherine and her folks in the communications team, to put together a quick, about a two-and-a-half-minute video that kind of hits the highlights of what's contained in the plan. So if you will just bear with me for a second, I will get that pulled up.
Union County is updating its comprehensive plan, which essentially serves as the roadmap for our future to guide growth and services and quality of life in the county. The project is called Union County 2050, and it's led by your voices. My name is Archie Morgan, I'm on WIIC radio here in Monroe, and I'm the chairman of the committee this task with making recommendations for this plan. Now, here's an overview of the proposed plan for the future of Union County, some of the recommended changes, and how we still need your help. Increase stormwater regulation to accommodate larger storms and to apply the standards to nearly all new developments. Require well testing for a potential home buyer so they would know about their well water before committing to buying a home. Allow residential subdivisions in areas designated for rural or agricultural uses with smaller sizes, if water and sewer service is available. For rural parts of the county without utilities, increase open space requirements for major subdivisions to help preserve the natural environment. Add standards for approving sites for new schools to address buffers, traffic impacts, and impact on nearby incompatible uses. Close the donut holes. These are the islands of land surrounded by municipality to create consistent developmental patterns. There's four new initiatives that we're proposing to address community concerns. Establish rural water authority to make the eastern and southern parts of the county eligible for state and federal grants to help residents connect to public water. Fund transportation projects through a countywide quarter cent sales tax pending voter approval. Establish a litter task force, and expand broadband internet service. Now, a lot of time and effort has been put into crafting these recommendations. The five subcommittees and the coordinating committee have met more than 60 times since last December and heard presentations on agricultural, transportation, stormwater, environmental health, residential and commercial development, solid waste, water and sewer service, and other issues. Now, we'd like to hear from you on drafted comprehensive plan ideas. Please help us shape our community's future, and we appreciate your input.
And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Morgan.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, appreciate your time. Mr. Manager, Frank, thank you. The process started, as you saw in the video, back in January, and will be complete early next year. We're in the third phase right now, which is plan development. The final step is to ask the planning board, and of course, you guys, to approve the plan, which will be in the spring of 2021. And you can see on your screen there, the comprehensive plan committee, the different phases and the schedule that we have. So what is our vision, anyway? Well, Union County in 2050 is a place that's, I'm sorry, is a place defined by connections, where local governments work together on targeted issues. As you know, we have 14 municipalities, and we all need to work together. There are clearly communicated plans for growth and infrastructure improvements, and resources are committed to their implementation. Union County is a growing community, of course, where there's increased capacity to address education and transportation and water and public safety and other multi-jurisdictional issues. High-density residential, retail and employment options in designated areas, convenient accessibility between retail and residential, and employment land uses, complementary development patterns along corridors. Preserve rural character is important to these different committees, and recognition and support of agriculture is a key industry, which it is here in the county. Enhanced community connections for the arts, agritourism, which is huge here, and also parks and recreation. So how did the committees vote? Well, you can see on your screen there, we talked about everything from current land use plan versus the new one, updating regulations versus regulations plus new programs, the increased stormwater requirements, and you can see how we voted, and nothing was allowed into our recommendation to you unless it reached at least 67% through all the committees, and you can see there the importance of each one. So how did the committees vote, anyway? The voting occurred in September. It was interesting, because the quarter cent sales tax, voter approval, of course, was very close. Transportation and recreation were both very important to the committees. Transportation was voted on in the affirmative by one vote, and recreation lost out by one vote. So it was all very, very close. Union County is proposing to implement what's called the advancement scenario. We had several that we picked through, and we went through with the advancement scenario. This scenario was selected in September over retaining the status quo or only making changes to developmental regulations. This scenario includes some of these details. It includes a revised land use map. The new map reflects more focused, higher-density areas, provisions for preserving our rural character in the county, identified commercial and employment nodes. In addition to traditional land use categories, the map identifies pockets of county-regulated land for annexation if the owners wish to re-own and develop their property for higher-density uses. Upgraded regulation, development regulations for new development would include higher stormwater standards, increased open space in rural areas, flexibility to cluster these lots in rural areas with utilities, and conditions for new school sites as well. In some of the new programs, the plan recognizes the county must invest in new programs to address community issues, like increasing transportation investments from $100,000 up to $5 million through the quarter cent sales tax voter approval, mandatory well inspections of new homes to inform these potential home buyers with the status of the safety of their drinking water, continued initiatives to address the unsafe drinking water that we have, including the shortline water extensions that you all have approved, and rural water authority. Establish a task force to identify strategies to address litter, which was important to the committees, and also committing resources to expanding broadband internet. If it's one thing that COVID all taught us, it's the need of broadband, increased broadband and GPS. Even in the city of Monroe, they don't have total broadband internet. So it's important not only to agriculture, but as we saw with COVID and people trying to virtual learn, is important to us all. You can see there the current Union County land use map there. The mixed residential use has been reduced significantly, you'll see, in that land use plan, and those transition zones have been addressed, the donut holes. And that was important when we had the previous summit on all this at the Ag Center. It was important to all the different municipalities. They all liked this plan, and they all appreciated the fact about the donut holes. So we're going to have opportunities for comment, as we've had every step of the way since we started this thing in December. The draft plan will be released to the public coming up November 24th. We will be soliciting comments from November 25th through December the 18th. We'll have three in-person meetings. I believe they to be the Ag Center, Mineral Springs, and what's the other?
Waxall.
Waxall Indian Trail area. There'll be an online video and presentation distributed through social media, draft plan posted on the project website, and then there'll be a couple drop-in webinars for the elected officials and one for the general public as well. So we ask that you think about these following issues and assumptions when you review the plan text. Union County is going to continue to grow, we all know that. Property owners have a right to develop their land, and the county and its 14 municipalities have a role to play in considering the proposed land uses and the developmental patterns. Nearly a quarter million people already live here and call Union County home. While we can influence future growth, much of the development pattern for the county has been set. This plan makes recommendations to benefit the county now through 2050 to address specific issues, transportation, stormwater, rural character, internet access, safe drinking water, and coordinated land uses. How to balance free-market perspectives versus addressing issues that affect the community. Are the recommended regulations and programs worth the cost? Are there strategies that you think should be considered? to implement the adopted vision and the scenario as well? In November this month, we'll release the plan to the public for comment. We'll do that starting on the 24th. Next month, we'll analyze those comments as they come in. In January, we will approve revisions to the plan based on the comments that we, we receive back. And then February and later, the recommendation by the planning board and the adoption by the county commission. So that's it. That's where we're at, at this point. Any, any questions? Make an answer.
Mr. Ray?
Archie, I just want to commend you on excellent job. Of course, when we asked you, heard that you were going, going to be asked for this job, you've done such an excellent job helping walk it through with all your other team members. I swear it looks like you've aged through the process.
I don't, I don't doubt that. But there, there are five subcommittees and the coordinating committee, and a lot of work, and a lot of, lot of meetings, and a lot of presentations. I think we've heard from everybody. But it's, it's been eye-opening, and it's, it's been an experience, and I appreciate your remarks.
But your, your radio station, keeping people informed about this plan, and the fact that you're so hands-on with it. I, I know all of us, we can't say enough to thank you for what you've done.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other questions or anything?
Archie, we do appreciate it. I would just say, when I, when I saw that video start up, and it had that roundabout, I said, "Uh-oh, they're fixing to say, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there." But, but it's obvious from the work you've done and the, and the input that you folks do know where you want us to go, and you have a plan to get us there. So I appreciate your time and all those folks' time that have participated in the effort. We look forward to more information.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 25 is the Union County Stormwater Study Grant Application.
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Manager Watson. I am here to present a similar presentation from back in the spring regarding a stormwater study that we are proposing to submit for funding on behalf of Union County, Lancaster County, and nearly all of the municipalities in Union County. But instead of doing it under a US Department of Transportation grant, we would be doing it through FEMA and North Carolina Department of Emergency Management. This is called the BRIC program, Building Resilient, I'm sorry, Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities. Our application is still Building a Resilient Carolinas. But this program is through FEMA. This is the first year it has been announced, and it is nationwide. Planning and scoping projects such as what we have put together are eligible activities. They announced it in the summer with the letter of intent required by September. We submitted one, and we were one of the top 20% of projects across the state. Not all were deemed eligible. They asked us to submit a full application. The match is a little bit higher than what it was for the, the USDOT grant back in the spring. This is 25% instead of 20%, but we can still meet that. Application is due to the state by December 18th. They will then do some quality assurance work and compile all of the applications from across North Carolina and submit them to FEMA by the end of January. And within a few months, we're supposed to receive announcement of whether we were funded or not. So our scope of work is essentially unchanged from the spring, but the budget has actually been reduced based on feedback from some other communities that have done similar studies. They said, "We were actually able to do it for less money." So we were able to reduce our grant application in response to that. So scope is still the same as what it was before. This map on the right is of all the road closures during Hurricane Florence, which really was the motivation to think about these issues. We're going to do a lot of data collection from the, the top locations throughout the county, and not only our county, but Lancaster County. Inventory what's there. Look at what are the sensitivity analyses? What happens if what we think is a 50-year storm is really more like a 100-year storm? Are these roads and these culverts and these bridges going to be able to accommodate that, especially as we continue to grow in the future? And then evaluate them, look at how the overall system works, where there are choke points, and where bridges may need to be upgraded, culverts may need to become bridges, and prioritize those and come up with designs. And that will then form the basis of, similar to the critical intersection program, it would form our priority for bridge replacements, that we would work with the North Carolina and South Carolina Departments of Transportation to prioritize these projects for implementation. So again, these are the municipalities that have participated. The number at the bottom is actually the correct one. It's not the 190,000, it's 193,500. Union County's requested to commit $96,000, that's just under half. You can see all these other municipalities that have committed as well. The amount is based on a hybrid of population density and square miles of the community. And example on the right, you know, a road that was washed out due to previous storms. So the action that's requested is to authorize us to submit this application at the end of December and commit to the local match, which we believe will be required in FY '22 and FY '23. So I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff to submit the grant application and commit to $96,000 in local match.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 26 is Union County Public Schools Land Purchase Authorization.
Mr. Chairman, Assistant County Manager Patrick Nylund will introduce the topic, but I believe we have Ms. Hightail with us this evening.
Mark Strickland.
Hello, Mr. Strickland. Back there in the corner, I didn't see. But if you would, Mr. Nylund.
Commissioners, in your agenda packet, you'll see a request from Union County Public Schools. There's actually two requests. Both have to deal with the land acquisition. Anytime the Union County School Board wants to acquire land, they need to get the Board of County Commissioners' approval to do so. There are, there are two requests. The first is to acquire 1.89 acres adjacent to Indian Trail Elementary for a price of $250,000. The second item is part of a swap, so there's two components to this one. They are going to swap 14.67 acres that they have and purchase some additional land. So in order to do that, we need to exercise our, or decline our right of acquiring that property and authorize them to acquire that property. They have the funds in their 2021 fiscal budget, and as Mark mentioned, they are here to answer any specific questions you all may have.
Questions. Mr. Ray?
I would like to make a motion to, on Indian Trail, approve the Union County Board of Education's purchase of two parcels located at 300 Education Drive in Indian Trail, North Carolina, tax parcel 07-114-068, and 07-114-68A in the amount of $250,000. And I know this, they wanted this to ensure the safety and the serenity of the campus there. So I think everybody was good with it. That's my motion on that.
We have a motion? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Aye.
Okay. On the Forest Hills Right of First Refusal, I would like to decline, make a motion to decline to exercise opportunity to obtain a portion of the Union County Board of Education's property identified on the Union County tax map as 02-214-018. As such, 14.67 acre portion is shown on the attached Exhibit A as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 115C-518, and approve of the Union County Board of Education's purchase exchange of a portion of the property identified on the Union County tax map as 02-214-017. As such, 96.12 acre portion is shown on the attached Exhibit A in the amount of $1,017,548.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you, Patrick. All right, that takes us to County Manager's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to add my voice to those earlier this evening and say thank you to Commissioner Aitmas for all the work and, and commitment that you've given and that you've had related to all the items that you've had to deal with during your tenure as county commissioner.
Thank you, Mark.
It's been a pleasure to work with you. We certainly appreciate it.
Thanks.
That's all I have this evening.
Mr. Helms?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to say I agree with Brian and Todd's assessment of Commissioner Aitmas and being a member of this board. It's been my pleasure working with you, Frank.
Thank you.
We hadn't always agreed, but we've agreed and disagreed professionally. And it's, you're going to be sorely missed. But we do thank you for everything. This was our project, and we're moving along as Frank's signature all over it. We appreciate what you've done. And then personally, from a personal standpoint, I'd like to thank the citizens of Union County for giving me the opportunity to serve for another four years. It's been a, it's been an honor, and I look forward to continuing to serve.
Mr. Ray?
Well, there's so many things I could say about Frank. I have, he's the one that taught me, and I still haven't learned, as Ms. Hightail will tell you, never pass up the opportunity to keep your mouth shut sometimes. But when I finally figured out I liked Frank, I told him, and this is a quote from Tombstone. I said, "Frank Aitmas, an educated man, do I like him or hate him? I hate him. He reminds me of myself." And he laughed, and he popped me on the shoulder like Frank can do. And I'll, I'll be through with therapy on that in, in the December. So Frank, we're going to miss you. You know, the devil you knows better than the devil you don't know, so have a good time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I doubt that most of you here are old enough to remember an album produced by The Byrds, a band called Byrds, back in the late 50s. And the title of that album was Turn, Turn, Turn. Pete Seeger wrote the title song, and it was based loosely on the third chapter of Ecclesiastes. "For everything there is a season and a time for every purpose." That verse goes on to say, "There's a time to weep, and a time to laugh, a time to mourn, and a time to dance. Tonight is a time for both sadness at the end of a board that has worked so well together, but also a celebration for the service and commitment to Union County given by Commissioner Frank Aitmas over the last eight years. I can say without a doubt that Frank has had an honest devotion to the growth and prosperity of our county and has served unselfishly. I'm reminded of a quote by one of America's time-honored patriots, General Douglas MacArthur. He said, "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, and the compassion to listen to the needs of others. He does not set out to be a leader, but becomes one by the equality of his actions and the integrity of his intent." Mr. Aitmas, it's been a pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, ask Michelle, Brian, and Patrick, and Commissioner Aitmas to join me down front. We have a little something for you.
Jerry, every time you get emotional, starts me crying. Let me know so I can have some tissue when it happens.
Frank, the other day, we were sitting in our conference room, and we were wondering how we were going to thank you for all that you've done for us, and we, and what kind of honor we could bestow upon you that would be befitting of your time with Union County Government. So it is my great pleasure to present you with the Order of the Hill Splitter. In recognition of valuable contributions and achievements, the management team recognizes Frank Aitmas, the Order of the Hill Splitter, with the rank of ambassador. Extraordinaire privilege to enjoy fully all the rights provided to the members of this esteemed order. And we even have you a book, so in your spare time, you can read all about the Hill Splitter. That's a blessing. Thanks. We appreciate you coming. That, that's the first such, you, you were the first in the Order of the Hill Splitter, by the way.
I have, I have no idea. I was a charge member.
I look forward to seeing who joins me.
Mr. Aitmas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jerry, I wish I'd gone before you. As I find myself in the autumn of my political tenure in Union County, I want to share some parting thoughts. Before I do that, there are a few people that I must publicly thank. Without these folks, my service to you would not have been possible. First and foremost, my wife, Ashley. Her support of my public service and her willingness to join me at the many events required of public servants has been invaluable to me, not to mention being my sounding board on many issues, not always agreeing with me. Randy Adcock, who's not only been a great friend to me, but also is my employer, has embraced my public service and allowed me to be away during business hours on many occasions, as is required by this position. So thank you, Randy. To Donnie Balcom, the late Don Carr, Senator Todd Johnson, Chairman Jerry Simpson, former Commissioner Jonathan Thomas, Brian Rogers, and of course, my campaign treasurer, Chris Duggan, thank you for keeping me grounded these past eight years. Your friendship towards me is worth more than I can express. To each member of this board, thank you, Jerry, Dennis, and Richard, and Stoney. I have appreciated the opportunity to work with each and every one of you. There are many, too many others to mention. So to all those who have supported me through prayer, financially, or through your vote, thank you. It has indeed been my, one of my greatest honors to have served the people of Union County these past eight years. When I was approached in 2011 and asked to run for commissioner, I never dreamed that it would be as fulfilling and rewarding as I found it to be. What I have learned while holding this office is that it is no different in Union County than it is elsewhere in this country. Many good things are accomplished. Some folks are satisfied. Some are happy, and yet others are completely disgusted by any action taken. In every decision I made, there was one factor that weighed on every vote that I cast. What is in the best interest of Union County? I leave here today knowing that in my heart, I never wavered in my personal beliefs that every matter coming before me was deliberated and ultimately decided by what I believe to be in the county's best interest. John Quincy Adams says, "Always vote for principle, though you may vote alone, and you may cherish the sweetest reflection that your vote is never lost." During these past eight years, I have had the opportunity to work alongside some of the most professional county staff that one could hope to know. Our time together, I believe, was productive, at times trying, always with the common goal of doing the right thing, moving the county forward, preparing for the future, and ensuring that every- that every citizen was fairly and equally represented. Many have asked, would you have done anything different while in office? The answer then and now is emphatically no. The votes I cast were based on facts as I knew them and based on many hours of careful thought and consideration. I can tell you that my votes were not political in nature, but rather grounded in doing what I believe was best for this county. In closing, I want to implore voters to learn about local candidates and be an informed voter. As Plato said, "One of the penalties for refusing to participate in politics is that you end up being governed by your inferiors." So I leave here tonight, I depart with a clean conscience, knowing that I served you well and in doing so was true to who I am. With that, I wish everyone a good evening. Time I will move that the board go into closed session for the following purposes: in accordance with General Statute 143-318-11A3 to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege; and in accordance with General Statute 143-318-11A4 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives; and in accordance with General Statute 143-318-11A5 to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of a portion of the following real properties, as well as a public utility easement owned by the heirs of Maxine Cunningham Tomerlin, file number 03E0019, Union County Clerk of Superior Court, Janice Westburg, Richard Herbert Tomerlin, and John Michael Tomerlin, described by deed recorded in Book 357, page 172 of the Union County Registry, parcel number 07021003B, for the possible use for an equalization tank with related easements related to sewer operations. Property owned by Black and Black Properties LLC, described by deed recorded in Book 4562, page 883 of the Union County Registry, parcel number 07126007A, and property owned by LR and FR LLC, described by deed recorded in Book 3409, page 898 of the Union County Registry, parcel 07126007B, for the possible extension by Union County Public Works of water lines; and property owned by Jimmy Evatt, described by deed recorded in Book 1366, page 640 of the Union County Registry, parcel number 05114242, and property owned by Waxaw Farms Homeowners' Association Incorporated, described by Platt, recorded in Platt Cabinet A, file 1938, and Platt Cabinet B, file 1A of the Union County Registry, for the possible use by Union County Public Works for a pump station; and in accordance with General Statute 143-318-11A1 to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to General Statute 143-318-10E. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.